Good evening and welcome to the North Bend City Council regular session agenda for Tuesday, September 12th, 7:03 here in the city of North Bend Council Chambers. After calling the meeting to order, I'd like to ask our BSA Group 156 to help lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. Good evening and welcome to everybody here in the council chambers. Welcome to our BSA 156 group, North Bend, I said that correctly? Who's here learning about communication and listening to the council meeting tonight? It's a wonderful evening to begin with lots of ceremony. So number two on our agenda tonight is our ceremonial items. And we'll go ahead and begin with item A, which is the retirement and recognition for Officer Brent Gaither from the Police Department.
Better side. I'm Chief Cal Mitz and tonight we are starting off our council meeting with recognition of one of our retired officers. Officer Brent Gaither retired here this summer and we didn't have an opportunity to get him here in front of the council and the community to honor his service, 26 years as a member of the North Bend Police Department. And it's quite an accomplishment. Anyone who's worn the badge and worn the uniform for any city, state or county agency understands the wear and tear that it puts not only on us, but our family members who are in it for the long haul with us right there and provide the stability that we need in our personal lives to make us better on the streets. And I'm sure that Brent agrees with that statement because I know that his wife has been a very important part of his career as well. So Brent has been started off as a police officer here. He served different roles to include criminal investigator in our detective division and has been a watch commander for several years, probably majority of his career. Helping out as a number two person on the sergeant's patrol sergeant's gone. Again, has a lot of accolades, be there all night, talking about his career. Maybe a few funny stories too, and you'll have to catch one of the guys out on the street and I'm sure they can fill you in on those stories too. But a very, very, just an incredible career. And Brent, if you want to come on up, we have a gift here from the city of North Bend. Right, I'm going to present you a plaque that says 26 years of excellence, 1997 to 2023, presented to Brent Gaither in sincere gratitude for the compassion, commitment and outstanding contributions you've provided to the city of North Bend. Congratulations on your retirement. After climbing the mountain, you can finally enjoy the view.
And want to keep in here. Yeah, let's bring your wife on up. Do you have any other family members here? God, you got a spot right here for you. Perfect.
So before we go any further, we usually like to yield before you, so this is your opportunity to, and your own life you deserve.
Well, I never really thought this day would come because it just went really fast and especially in the end, but I want to thank the citizens of the city of North Bend for giving me the opportunity to serve them over this last 26 years. It's a lot to be memorable in my mind, to think back on all the enjoyment, all the friends I've made in different neighborhoods. I'm going to miss a lot of that. I'd like to thank first my wife for being there with me together for 40 years together. And it took a lot of fortitude on her behalf as well. I'd also like to thank my sister who can't be here, she passed last October. She was a sheriff's deputy and OSP Cooper, parole probation officer, and she helped get me into this career. So I want to say a special thing to her and other family members that couldn't be here tonight. And then also the other officers I served with here, the fire department, city numbers, I got to be friends with over here. Thank you all for your support. We're all a team when we're out there and nobody gets to see each other each day, but every time we did, it was a team effort every time. And I really, really cherish my time here at North Bend. I tend to still live here and stay in touch with everybody. Though it's not going to be on a weekly or monthly basis, maybe to their delight. But I do find staying in the case unit here, I'm really, really happy to serve my career. Thank you all.
All right, so we're going to take two sets of photos, actually technically three, but just two. Okay, technically. All right. All right, now I'm going to do just the three of you. Just the three of you, yes. Yes, what was your radio number?
It was 310.
So 310 and a half, say, all right, let's not get in the photo now, just like here. All right, if y'all will scooch just a little to your right. Yeah. There you go, all right, ready? The other right, my right, your right, left, whatever. And although they're very, very shy, the third one will be the officers that are like hiding out here. Where are you going? Just as much as that family, so don't go anywhere. All right, let's see if I have to squint anyone. No, that actually works perfect. All right, here goes. Thank you.
So what we have, the item B was five years of service and we're going to do that at a later point. We're going to stretch and B is not available, so that'll take us into square and patrol officer Michael. So we'll go ahead and bring the chief back up for that, reset for photos.
Actually, Madam Mary, you do this. So you do it down there.
Okay.
The chief's already done his job.
Oh, here it is, okay.
Okay. So we have a vote of office, state of Oregon, county of Kansas, city of North Bend. Repeat after me. I, Michael Meyer.
I, Michael Meyer.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution.
Constitutional.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And Oregon.
In Oregon.
And the Charter.
And the Charter.
And ordinances of the city.
And ordinances of the city.
Of North Bend.
Of North Bend.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Of a police officer.
Of a police officer.
For the city of North Bend.
For the city of North Bend.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Somebody put readers out for me.
All right, all right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Shall we get a photo with the chief and the council or however you'd like to direct this? Okay, all right.
Oh gosh, they all went back to their seats.
We have, we have another couple more proclamations, yeah, so let's see, let's.
All right, come on now.
All right, there's someone tied to you on the other. You're good luck. Okay, that's good, all right. All right. All right, congratulations.
So, so our troops know it is very important to document historical moments like this, so doing a good job of that.
Now, if you want to say anything, you're more than welcome, but I wouldn't.
Anything you say, yeah, the whole, the whole thing, as well as the squad I have here. Officer Brent Gaither, he was a go-to when I was the community service officer, so he taught me a lot. So I appreciate it, looking forward to serving in the city of North Bend.
Go ahead and bring the chief back up, we got introduction of Josh Nawani, Community Resource Officer.
So this is Josh Nawani and he is our current community service officer. And we brought him back into our full police department here and have really enjoyed having him back with us and he has done, and it's just an outstanding job. Normally, at most of our police positions, we have weeks of training to go in before you're really cut loose. Josh is able to hit the ground running in this position, only had a week with our former community service officer, you just met with Michael Meyer. And week two, it was a really seamless transition and he's done a great job. He's a local person here in our community, here with his wife and two kids. And we are really fortunate to have him here. And the position of the community service officer is technically a half, a shared position between the public courts department and the police department. Deals primarily with codes issues. Some of those could be anything from illegal camping, it could be a code violation in the neighborhood with maybe a problem property, parking issues, just a myriad of things. And sometimes he's at the bottom of the hill where the snowball kind of keeps going down and picks up a lot of jobs. Sometimes we'll just go by the wayside because there's just not enough people to do all the work. And he's, he's really been a workhorse for us and I'm really looking forward to great things from Josh. And ask you all to give him a warm welcome and stop and talk to him on the street if you get an opportunity to. And I think he'd enjoy that just like the rest of us do, so thank you very much for coming on.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to E and F. We have a couple of proclamations this evening. E is National Drive Electric Days proclamation. So I have, come on down here. Grab the proclamation, this is for, and we have a special visitor here for our electric proclamation. Can I ask who's joining us this evening?
I am Electroman.
Electroman.
My alvego, you may know him as the innkeeper, but I am Electroman and I'm here to let you know that solar and EV electric vehicles are on the way.
Wow.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
The pleasure's mine.
Yes, so come on and join me just so we can be smack dab in the middle of that camera there. And I have a proclamation to read. Are you ready?
I'm honored.
Okay, where's those readers, let's see. I'll test them for a second. I should have had your magic glasses. These are actually pretty good. Whereas the global community recognizes the importance of addressing environmental challenges. And whereas the Oregon Clean Air Plan released on March 31st, 2023, outlines a clean energy framework for electric producers, setting goals for reducing statewide admissions. And whereas the Oregon State Transportation Electrification Plan focuses on transportation electrification, am I saying that right? Yes.
Precisely.
Initiatives to enhance transportation across the state. And whereas the Oregon Department of Transportation role in the transportation electrification, I'm going to blame this on the city recorder, plan is to elaborate with various groups to develop Oregon's electric transportation infrastructure, emphasizing its reliability and catering to both rural and urban needs while educating Oregonians about electric vehicles and EVs. Whereas the state of Oregon, with the support of various departments and organizations, is working on initiatives to increase awareness and promote the adoption of electric vehicles and the development of the EV charging infrastructure. And whereas by 2035, the state of Oregon has set a goal that all new passenger cars, SUVs and light duty pickups, trucks sold should be either battery electric or plug-in hybrid electric vehicles. There's more.
Yes, ma'am.
And whereas National Drive Electric Week 2023 is a nationwide event to highlight the benefits of all-electric and plug-in hybrid vehicles. And whereas the transportation sector is moving towards clean energy technology, including electric vehicles to support a sustainable environment and economy. And whereas EVs are efficient transportation methods that can stimulate job creation in various sectors, including EV manufacturing, charging infrastructure and electrical services. And whereas the city of North Bend is committed to promoting clean energy and sustainably, including the provisions of charging stations for the public. And whereas the itty-bitty end of North Bend, Oregon is hosting a National Drive Electric Week event on September 22nd and September 23rd, 2023, in line with the state of Oregon's Clean Air and Transportation Electrification Plans. Now, therefore, be it resolved, I, Jessica Engelke, Mayor of the City of North Bend, do hereby proclaim the days of September 22nd and 23, 2023 as National Drive Electric Days in the city of North Bend. And I invite all residents to join in supporting this initiative. Thank you. So, pretty glad to be here. I was teasing when I said I believe in a balloon on the city reporter. Those are very hard words to pronounce in the front of your presence here. You don't want to screw this up.
I have that effect on the masses. Thank you for joining us. Lady, the Lord, the lady, the lady.
All right, we'll look at you first, all of that. Okay.
All right, so before I go, I'll start the recording again. But let's, let's, I'll give you the the nod and we can hear about what this fest is all about and then I'll take the photos.
Okay, so are we, we're going to take a moment now to tell us about the festival? All right, so tell us what we can expect on the 22nd and 23rd.
And fair citizens of North Bend, as you know, I am Electroman. Electroman is here to tell you, good change is coming. We'll take a chop out of this current technology, that's true, and be amped up and bowl over the resistance with lightning speed. Ladies and gentlemen, as Electroman, I want to let you know that we have the Solar and EV Fest. We've done this before and when I was in collaboration with the city of North Bend and sponsorship and great support from Pacific Power, we are working with different schools in the area, EV manufacturers in Oregon, EV manufacturers in this region to include Northern California, all the way to Washington, to bring electric vehicles, not just the cars and trucks, but also what's what the state calls micro mobility, your bicycles and your scooters. And, and also very near to my heart will be the contractors, the electricians and the solar installers. They'll be out there to talk to folks about the need for an expanding workforce, specifically in the electrical service industry. Now, I have something to proclaim. It's me, Rip the Innkeeper. Listen, just before I was an innkeeper, oh, heck, I'm still an electrician. I come from a family of electricians, my dad's an electrician, me, my brother and my son, we're all electricians, we're all grunt electricians. And whether you take a look at the Department of Labor's Bureau of Labor Statistics reports, there's been a steady decline across all construction trades, with the biggest one being the electrical industry. There's a, well, there's this default for many reasons. And we're stimulating this as an industry, no, nay, as a culture, as we put money and attention into career and technology education or science technology, science technology and engineering and mathematics, right, guys? Troop, 156, take it, Troop 156. And dig this, we need the electricians out in the field, not just to help grow and maintain the current EV infrastructure, but we also need that same, the same group to come in to help, well, take the place of the electricians like me, who evolved out of the industry. These are darn darn good paying jobs and they start with organizations like, well, the Union's Joint Apprehension Training Committee, or JETC. They start with the non-unions, IEC, the Independent Local Contractors Association. And these organizations are working with schools like North Bend High School's Current Technology Education Program, like AYA, what? Yes. At AYA, down here in Charleston, Oregon, is going to be the newest solar electric program for job training as described by the Oregon Bureau of Labor and Industry in conjunction with, well, a myriad of other organizations. Ladies and gents, perhaps at the end of this meeting, you confer with Mr. Scott Cooper, who's hosting the program. The festival will have three locations on September 22nd and 23rd. And we urge you, I won't bore you more about this, but I'll urge you, take a look at evfastorgan.com, that's evfastorgan.com, that's evfastorgan. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much.
He's back.
I have returned.
All right, here we go. All right, don't spark anybody. Excellent, thank you.
We'll see you all at the festival. Okay, we have one more proclamation. Do we have anybody here who has participated in the USA Judo Senior Nationals? Come on down. Let's see. So it's Bryn and Haley, right? Okay. Okay, why don't you guys stand on each side of me and you've got it, you don't have electrification in here, do you, in the proclamation? Okay, good, it's really hard for me to pronounce, apparently. Well, before we begin, real quick here, you want to tell us a little bit about what you did?
So Haley and I went, we do something called Kata, which is choreographed fighting. And we went to Spokane, Washington, and we competed in four categories. And we won gold in all four of those categories and we've been asked to compete in Mexico by the team, by Team USA.
Well, we're very proud of you in the city of North Bend and we have a proclamation here today. So City of North Bend, Oregon proclamation. Whereas the USA Judo Senior Nationals was held in Spokane, Washington in May, 2023, and Shipyard Judo in North Bend was proudly represented by three of its esteemed instructors. Whereas Mike Govin, a Sedan III, third degree black belt, who has been practicing judo since 1998 and teaching since 2007, showcased his skills in the age group competition. Despite facing a former world champion, Mike's dedication and spirit were evident, earning him a commendable second place. And whereas twin sisters Bryn and Haley Busgrood, both Sedan, first degree black belts, competed in the Qatar competition on May 21. Their journey began in 2012 at Southwestern Oregon Community College, where they were introduced to the world of judo. Their passion and dedication led them to compete in various tournaments, earning them numerous accolades and recognition. And whereas Bryn and Haley, with their years of experience and rigorous training, emerged as four-time national champions at the USA Judo Nationals. Their exceptional performance in two forms, nage, get that right? Nagay, nohata, forms of throwing and juu no katta, forms of gentleness in both the under 33 category and the intermediate category is a testament to their skills and dedication. And whereas following their outstanding achievements, Bryn and Haley were selected by the USA Judo National Team to represent the United States at the Pan-American Judo Confederation, PJC, Veteran in Qatar Championships in Guadalajara, Mexico from September 22nd to 24th, 2023. This honor marks them as the first members of the Shipyard Judo to compete internationally. So now, therefore, we recognize and celebrate the achievements of, and I want to make sure I say it right, Mike Govin and Bryn Busgrood and Haley Busgrood, their dedication to the support and to, to the sport, unwavering commitment to excellence and representation of Shipyard Judo on national and international platforms are commendable. Unwavering commitment to excellence and representation of Shipyard Judo on national and international platforms are commendable. We further acknowledge the support and encouragement of the Shipyard Judo Family and the Northwest Judo Community which has been instrumental in the success of these remarkable individuals. And witness where, um, where uh, we hereby proclaim this recognition in honor of their achievements and wish them continued success in all of their future endeavors on this um, September day, twenty twenty three. Congratulations. So you leave soon, right? It's very, very soon. Alright. And is there anything else you wanted to share with the group?
Um, we've been doing judo since we were six years old and we started competing when, I think just a couple of months later. Then we got into Kada, um, when we were eight and it was just our, our niche and we've just been doing it since then.
Yeah, we're not seventeen years old, so we've been doing it for ten years.
Wow, yeah. And you have, instead of you have a mom here tonight? Yeah, I'm sure she had taken you to a lot of practices, right? Good job, mom. Alright, alright, let's get a photo with the council. Come on now.
Both are seniors at
Is there anything you want to teach me real quick?
Do you need your back scratched? Alright, here we go, ready?
Good, alright. Well, congratulations.
Alright, well, what a fun night for all of the ceremonial items. And um, we'll go ahead and start moving through the rest of the agenda. Number three on the agenda tonight is our consent calendar. Is there a motion from the council?
I move that we approve the consent calendar as listed here.
Okay, I have a first from Counselor Nordoff, second from Counselor Jones. Um, any discussion? All in favor of approving the consent calendar as presented, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Number, that takes us to, let's see. Consent calendar goes all the way through J. That takes us to public comments this evening. Do we have anybody for public comment? One to be read in the record. Okay, I'm not sure if I have a copy of that. Do you guys have a copy of that? Okay, um, alright, we have one to be read into the record, so I always like to say thank you for participating to, um, for public comment. Those of you that are online or here in person. And that public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Each person has three minutes to speak and that's whether you're online or if I'm reading and it's three minutes. Our governing body takes the input into consideration. However, in observance of Oregon Open Meeting Laws, this isn't a time for us to have dialogue with you, but rather a time for us to listen to you and, um, for us to listen to you. Our city administrator and city recorder are taking notes of any action needed. So the one public comment that I have to read is from, um, looks like a resident of trying to see if it, if they're, if they live in North Bend.
They do not.
They do not. So this is a resident that's outside of North Bend. Um, and the name is Gloria Noah. Um, and the subject says, um, homelessness. My family and I wish, my family and I would like to know why the council feels it's more important to purchase new vehicles for the police and fire departments than to build homes for the homeless. We are appalled that you wouldn't divert money from American Rescue Plan that was budgeted by you to be spent on homeless initiatives and then reallocated for the purchase of vehicles. Our governor, um, on her first in office declared Oregon's homelessness crisis a state of emergency. Yet I don't see this council treating it as such. The words crisis or emergency seem to have fallen on the deaf ears of this council. That was enough money to build housing on one of the city's so-called surplus lots, properties and could have, uh, provided a proof, a roof over the head of many, um, many of our homeless population. I encourage you to rethink your priorities in North Bend and start taking action on fixing the problem or none of you will be sitting in these seats after the next election. Our citizens need homes now. Read this at the meeting, please. And that again was a, well, it's not from somebody in North Bend. Alright, thank you. Let's see. Um, next on the agenda, number five is, um, resolution number three, 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 nine, a resolution adopting the twenty twenty-three um, Coos County Multi Jurisdictional National Hazards Mitigation Plan. And Mr. City Administrator is, am I reading this resolution tonight? Is this a revised resolution? Or can you remind me if this is just a motion to accept it?
Um, this is the actual, uh, resolution thirty-three, thirty-nine. Um, and you should have on page seventy-five, the suggested.
On page seventy-five, thank you. Okay, is there, does the council see the suggested motion there?
I moved it for, uh, we need to adopt revolution number three, 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 nine, and thereby adopt um, Coos County Multi Jurisdictional National Hazard Mitigation.
Okay, here are first from Counselor Jones. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Counselor Schultz. Is there any discussion? No discussion? Um, then, um, the first, the second, no discussion. Um, all in favor of the motion to adopt resolution number three, 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 nine and thereby adoption of the Coos County Multi Jurisdictional National Hazard Mitigation Plan, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, that was number five. Number six on the agenda tonight is twenty twenty-three Voting Delegates League of Oregon City's Annual Business Meeting, page one fifteen. I know I'm looking here for a motion from the council and we did have some discussion last night in our work session. Does anybody remember? How well that discussion went, what they would like to have as an emotion?
I do remember and if it's the same as everyone wants now, so, um.
Cause I remember. It's not that I don't remember. I was wondering if you all remember.
Yes.
Yeah.
I have a motion for the, for the, the voting delegate to vote on behalf of North Bend City Council and the appley of city, uh, annual business meetings. We have Jessica Engelke first and then as proctor. And that was second.
Okay, that is your first. That was the first?
Yes.
And, and a second from Counselor Jones. Was there any discussion? Okay, then all in favor of Counselor Schultz's motion to have and the voting delegates at the League of Oregon City's Annual Business Meeting to be Jessica Engelke and either proxy or um, alternate, um, Counselor Hamilton, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so that was, that was, um, six. Number seven is a word of, um, bid for minor paving projects. I heard from our, uh, during our work session last night from our city, our Public Works Director. Um, got some info on that. So do we have a motion from the council on pages or, um, of item, agenda item seven?
I, well, I motion to award both projects for the paving inlays to North River Materials in the amount of ten thousand for Vista Drive and twenty thousand three hundred for, uh, McPherson Avenue.
Okay, first from Counselor Schultz.
Second.
Second from Counselor Hamilton. Is there any discussion? Just wish there was more money to take care of all the sixty-four million dollars of dilapidated streets. So I appreciate the Public Works Department doing the best that they can, um, in an almost an impossible job. So thank you. Your first, a second, no further discussion. All in favor of, of awarding both projects for paving inlays to North Knife River Materials in the amount of ten thousand dollars for Vista Drive and twenty thousand three hundred for McPherson, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That was item seven. Number eight on the agenda is authorization to purchase replacement flow meters for solids handling at the wastewater treatment plants. Again, great information on the work session last night. There's a suggested motion in your packet on page one twenty-three. Isn't there? Is there one twenty-three?
There's a one twenty-one.
Okay. Is there a motion from the council?
I move that we authorize the amount of five, five hundred and seventy-five thousand intended for replacement of multiple pieces of equipment from the wastewater equipment budget. First, calculation is lower. It's, yes, it's on the second page.
The, oh, so we had
Fourteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars and seven cents. Okay, fourteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty-seven cents. Uh, we are purchasing two Endress Hauser magnetic flow meters from Field Instruments and Controls.
Okay, and just to, um, is it, is it important that we read what, uh, in Counselor Nordoff's motion wastewater equipment in the budget line item? Can we add that in there too? But if that is budget zero, four, 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 seven, nine, eight, nine, zero, should be in there?
It's part of the actual, uh, document record, so it, um, matches up on the minutes.
Okay. Alright, so we have our first from Counselor Nordoff.
Second.
Second from Counselor Schultz. Any discussion? Alright, um, all in favor then of, um, wait, yes, yeah.
Uh, thank you. I really appreciate the extra explanations. I'm a layperson, as we all are. And, um, I really appreciate the staff's efforts in writing up this stuff, um, walking you through. Thank you.
Okay. Um, all in favor of the council to authorize, or, let's see, yeah, the way that that's written there on page one twenty-four, council all, all in favor of the off, um, because it says, for council to authorize purchase of two endless, but
The council's authorizing the actual purchase, so the laws of the department.
For the council to authorize the purchase of two Endress Hauser magnetic flow meters from Field Instruments and Controls in the amount of fourteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty-seven cents, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That was our flow meters for solids handling, number eight. Um, number nine is action, um, if any resulting from executive session. And we did not have any action needed, so that takes us to number ten, which is our, um, city administrators' report.
Thank you, Mary and Council. Um, it's obviously been a month since we've all had a update, so I'm not going to bore you with a lengthy report. Uh, I will say that, uh, we've taken a different approach on the reports. They have a different look and feel. They are posted on our website, they're on our, uh, social media, um, but just a couple of highlights. Um, uh, you can now make reservations completely online for our community center. Um, so again, uh, part of the council goals to mainstream and make our government more efficient. Uh, our website is now in a hundred and thirty-three different languages. Uh, that is, um, uh, we were, um, approached, uh, with a representative, uh, uh, over at the, um, United Way, um, who asked if we could help with some diversity and, uh, we asked our, um, city recorder to investigate. We've worked with our, uh, website developer. And so now you just click a button and everything that's text actually just changes on the fly. So you can read our minutes if you want in one of any hundred and thirty-three different languages. Uh, we're switching over to GovDeals, which I mentioned. It should, uh, help maintain, uh, and bring in more, uh, dollars for our surplus items. And there's a talk of town on September twenty-eighth. That's the Main Street program. It'll be from six to eight, uh, in the event tent. Um, there'll be, uh, live music, refreshments, appetizers, and we want folks to get involved in our Main Street, uh, program. And so it's a great opportunity. The, uh, request or proposal for the visitor information center is on the street. Um, there is a, uh, pre-bid, a non-mandatory meeting on the fourteenth, uh, for those that want to, uh, get more information or do walkthroughs. The finance department's also having a talk of town, uh, that's set for September twentieth. Uh, that will be, uh, at the North Bend Public Library. It is, uh, at six thirty. And so if you want to learn anything about city finances and the state of, uh, city finances, that's the place to be. Uh, we also want to thank FEMA for a generous grant of two hundred and eighty-two thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars. Uh, that's going to allow our fire department to, uh, replace their twenty-year-old, uh, breathing apparatus. Um, and, um, I think that the, uh, the fire department this, uh, uh, fiscal year, this past year alone has brought in over eight hundred thousand dollars of grants into the city of North Bend that otherwise taxpayers would have had to been on note for, uh, to, uh, replace that equipment. Um, speaking of new equipment, the new fire truck arrived, uh, in between your last meeting. They had a great ceremonial. Um, in fact, we're on the front page of the newspaper and actually we take up basically two pages. Um, we had a nice push-in ceremony and, um, they cooked, uh, fire dogs over there and, uh, it was a great, um, event. The, uh, fire chief involved the public and actually, um, luckily our insurance agent was on hand and, and observed, uh, for safety reasons as, uh, citizens pushed the truck, uh, into the fire hall. Um, and I, I kept watching her eyes as she's like watching everybody, making sure they don't run over anyone's tires or anything, I mean their feet. Um, and speaking of the fire department, in collaboration with the Office of the Oregon Fire Marshal, um, we've tackled the, uh, Pittam Loop, uh, defensive, uh, cleanup area. Um, and, uh, quite frankly, we've heard just absolutely overwhelming feedback from the public. And the newspaper was so excited, they actually, uh, devoted, uh, half a page to all the photos of before and after. Um, so, uh, we're just hearing kudos. It's, uh, clean, safe. Um, uh, we shouldn't have, uh, the ten fires we had last year. Um, the Parks Department's been very, very busy at South Lake Island cleaning up, sprucing it up. Um, we're trying to march forward because obviously, um, there'll be the, uh, hundred uh, year anniversary of the, uh, theater coming up and the blade sign will come later this year. And so we're just, uh, when time allows, we're out there doing that. Um, Parks Department also, uh, uh, is in the midst of working with a contractor to, uh, um, uh, change over the tennis, uh, to pickleball court, um, uh, out of the McPherson Courts. Um, Grant Circle is now completely powered up, so we can actually have events downtown. Um, and, um, uh, sad to report, but, um, somebody broke into the pool. Um, and, uh, stole over a hundred bucks out of the till. Um, all the rest of the valuables were in the safe, um, but we have cameras and so, um, we have, uh, video and, um, uh, and, and unless the police department tells them otherwise, I'm gonna post that video. And, um, uh, we don't take theft of city property lightly. Um, the taxpayers are paying for that facility and, uh, uh, for someone to, uh, break in like that, that's, um, uh, just, uh, very unfortunate. Um, and the, um, uh, Public Works Department, um, they have, uh, been, uh, busy um, with, um, uh, paving projects. Um, uh, Chester was paved on September first. Uh, McPherson inlay scheduled for, uh, the week of the eighteen. Um, and, um, uh, ODOT's doing some night work, um, and, uh, uh, tonight, I think, tonight and tomorrow. And so, no, if you don't follow our social media or website and everything, you're not in the know, but you want to avoid those areas, um, because, uh, well, there's going to be traffic, uh, patterns up there. So, um, a lot of great things happening and, um, so that's, uh, the city administrator's report.
Alright, thank you. Now, um, before we move to committee reports, just to, is it the, the historically uncommissioned, that's going to come during committee reports or?
That's another meeting.
That's a totally another
Yes.
meeting after a German in this meeting.
You have two more meetings.
Okay, we also have the URA. Yeah, see, I told the troops here, no meeting should ever be over an hour. And we had all those photos now, but, uh, we can dismiss them after the council meeting if they don't want to sit through the historically uncommissioned because you probably have homework to do, but we'll, we'll, we'll keep going. I'm letting you know. Um, okay, so that took, that was the city administrator's report. Now we're on to committee reports. Was there any committee reports? Okay, I do, I'm going to look to our city administrator. He and I are on the homelessness, um, committee. Do we have anything that we should report out on? You can think of tonight.
Um, there is a, uh, homeless, uh, task force meeting. This is House Bill, uh, forty-two, twenty-three.
Mm-hmm.
This is just for, I don't use House Bills. Uh, House Bill forty, twenty, uh, forty-one, twenty-three. It's a consortium between Coos Bay, North Bend and Coos County. Uh, and, uh, that meeting, uh, is tomorrow. It's at the Newmark Center. Uh, uh, at SWAC. Uh, it is a public meeting, the public Uh, uh, at SWAC, uh, it is a public meeting, the public can participate. And that meeting is, uh, from one-thirty to two-thirty. And, uh, they also have individual committees that meet. Um, the purpose of that meeting is to stay focused on homelessness and housing, uh, in the community. Um, and, uh, we anticipate, um. Uh, nice little announcement tomorrow.
Yeah.
At the governor's office.
Very good. That'll be good for people to listen in on then or attend if they can. Uh, we did have, um, for the special events committee, um, during, in the consent calendar, we appointed two more people. We had a, another, the first person was appointed a couple of meetings prior, so that makes three, uh, residents. And, uh, councillor Hamilton and I, so I'm working with the city reporter to have our, um. Get our first meeting notice, hopefully, uh, meeting later this week, so that'll be posted online. So that is our committee reports and, you know, really. Um, lots of openings still on committees, so reach out to the city or go to the website. Um, because those, we have openings on the budget committee, if you want to learn more about that, those are always exciting. I'll go ahead and move on to number twelve, which is council comments, so we'll go ahead and start down here with councillor Jones, council comments.
So, um, I just wanted to give a few sentences about what happened at the, um. Coos County Neighborhood Watch meeting that, um, all the public officials from, um. The county, the county commissioners and the two councils from Coos Bay and North Bend were invited to.
This was at the Egyptian, correct?
This is at the Egyptian and, um. I just wanted to give a little update on that, so that. That, uh, the, the Coos County Neighborhood Watch, for people who don't know, is, um. A group that's on Facebook, they have about sixty-two hundred people. Um, and it's, uh, uh, a, a venue for getting information out, particularly around public safety. This is where neighbors say, you know, what, what is this, you know, um, suspicious activity and, um. For the most part, uh, you, you know, are in tandem with the police. Uh, you know, calling in the police as well, um, but this was a meeting about our camping ordinances. And in particular, how it's affecting some of the property owners. And so, um. There, they wanted all the council and commission to come, but unfortunately, these sort of community meetings that aren't. Um. Staffed by city can't, we can't really comply with all the public meeting laws, so. Um, I, I knew that no one else was going or guessed that no one else was going, um, and so I just went as a, as a person participating. Not, not being, um, you know, the spokesman for the city or anything like that, but just as a person who was on the team doing the ordinance. And so the, um, there were about, I would say eighty-two hundred people who attended. And, um, Commissioner Taylor came, although he, uh, did not sit on the panel, I sat on the panel. I don't know why he chose to do that, but, um, I just wanted to say that, uh, I got an opportunity to clarify. For a lot of citizens that were there, uh, some of the reasons, some of the big reasons that we had to make an ordinance. That we chose the way we did and the sort of, you know, the several intersections of, um. You know, problem areas that we're trying to address and the limitations of those, and so that felt like, uh, an important experience to have. Um, I was able to plug our property watch for North Bend and for Coos Bay, as well as plug that, you know, in North Bend. My opinion is, we'd have police officers, um, but they're doing a really great job kind of revolutionizing, um, public interaction. With people who need some resources, um, so that felt like a good thing to bring again. Um, and I encouraged people to come to council, uh, with their comments so that they can be heard, um. I encourage them that, you know, when they choose their favorite council person to bring their issues. Uh, instead of coming themselves, they're actually not doing their own issue justice, they, when they speak for themselves. Um, it means that they're counted, they're counted in the public record, and we can have better decisions around that. So that felt like a good thing to clarify, um. And, uh, I'm a member of the group, so I felt like it was, it was an easy yes, but it just, it was good to go.
Right. Thank you for doing that.
I hope that was worth listening to.
Yes. Councillor Nordoff, I should have gone to you first, it's your birthday tonight, so I apologize.
No place I'd rather be.
I mean. Cheers to your birthday.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, I, one of the nicest things about being on council is the invitations you get to go visit. Places and one of them came in that council was invited, uh, to go visit the, the headquarters of Zipley Fiber. Down in Coos Bay. And it was really fascinating and I was very impressed with their staff. But we got to tour the facility and, um, I think it was Mr. Millire and myself. That showed up from our, from our, um, city council, but. We got to tour the entire thing. Now the building had been. The headquarters of the phone company, I believe, so it, but it made me, there's, it was enough high-tech stuff there. And, and starting with a big whiteboard that had a one-line diagram of Zipley Fiber's. Uh, infrastructure from here to, I don't know, it was, it was the entire county. And who, where the links were and everything, it was a one-line diagram. Now, and then we got to walk around and see all the different rooms with all the different electronics. And as a, as a, um. Former nuclear power plant, plant operator out in the turbine building or in the mechanical electrical ox building. It made me feel like I was back in the operating plant because there was that much. Raceway and cable tray and all that kind of thing, so it was really fascinating and, and their staff are. I was very impressed with their staff and, and their technical abilities and, and just really sharp people, so I appreciated that. Thank you.
Alright. Councillor Schultz.
Um, I'm just gonna kind of reiterate. Uh, just how good Bryn and Haley are and they went through Hillcrest. Um, both of their parents are teachers, the fact that they've been doing this for ten years and they're only seventeen, um, and the fact that they're gonna compete at the, like. Like the world level, so they're going to Mexico with their mom, so it's very exciting. And again, they were, it's costly as well, and so they did have a GoFundMe to raise money to try and get them to be able to go and compete, so.
And councillor Hamilton, oh, you had a birthday too.
Oh, yeah.
You got two September birthdays on here too, so happy birthday.
Thanks, um, after all the, uh, input for the, uh, paranormal, uh, event over here in North Bend, I figured, well, yeah. I'll go check it out, so, uh, it was pretty good, uh, there was no dead chickens flying around or nothing like that. Nothing freaky about it, so. Nobody was voodoo or anything like that, it was, uh, it, it was pretty good. Um, the other thing I want to say is the, uh, Boy Scouts are in here. Uh, I was actually a Boy Scout too and, uh. I worked with a guy that, uh, went to North Bend. He, uh, actually got his eagle and he was the Eagle Scout. Project of the whole state of Oregon for the year. So whatever, which I think it was like two thousand eighteen, nineteen, seventeen, maybe. He did it and so he was, he had the best Eagle Scout project in the whole state of Oregon, which is at the Veterans Memorial. There's a set of boots with a gun and it's all concreted up, so he did that and it, he was gonna eventually, uh, go to school for a nurse. And he worked with our company and we donated time and helped him do this project. Well, since then, so he works for us and so he's not gonna be a nurse anymore, now he's going into engineering. As engineering program, he's in school right now doing it and, uh, he's very willing to whip out his Eagle Scout card. And show you that he was a, he made Eagle Scout, so keep up the good work and stay with it.
Yeah, alright. Um, yes, thank you troop one fifty-six for joining us tonight. Uh, it is, you know, thank your leaders. Um, in your troop, um, we have, so we have PJ Kaiser and PJ, and can you remind me the two people that are with you?
Quincy and Del, who's our scout master.
Quincy and Del, scout master. And Tim. Yeah. Yeah. So, so, so to the troop, you know, thank them for bringing you here because guess what? Out of ten thousand people in the city of North Bend. You are here tonight, like learning about ci- city government. And, um, you're probably, there's, you're gonna probably meet many people who've never been to a city council meeting before, so hopefully. You're finding something that, um, is interesting and, and, uh, you're always welcome, just please know that you're welcome to come back anytime. Um, I just want to, um, take a minute to say, um, again, I mentioned earlier, we do have openings on committees. And so do spread the word and if people are watching tonight, um, you know, you, you hear things like there was the, the public comment earlier in the evening. It's clear that it's very confusing how the budget works and why you can use some grant money for one thing and not for another. And the best way to find out, um, you know. How we can use that money and is to join the budget committee or one of the other, um, committees that we have openings on. So, um, it is true, we spoke about it last night in a work session. If we were to bring every street up in town, um, to, you know, be fixed. It'd be sixty-four million dollars and we get, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand or so, I think is what Mr. Dunham said last night. Um, that can go, um, towards streets, so we got problems. And it's not going to be something that's fixed overnight, and so the best way to figure that out is to get involved and be part of the solution. So, um, again, if there's anybody who's watching, I welcome you to come and contact the city of North Bend, come to a meeting, give public comment. Um, fill out a form, join a committee and, uh, we can solve this problem together. So, let's see. Alright, um, so that was the end of council comments and we'll go ahead and move on to other business if there's any.
Um, there's not specific, um, other businesses, but, um. I do want to address, uh, the letter that we did receive, if I may.
Mm-hmm.
Um, from a staff perspective. Uh, because folks here and, you know, this is the meeting and so. If they don't go back or they don't look at the budget or they don't go back and look at that meeting, you know, this is what they hear and so. I always tell folks, don't allow the facts to get in the way of a good story and you only know what you know. And so a couple of salient points, um, they make reference to, uh, those funds, uh, being earmarked. Uh, to build homes for the homeless, um, that was actually ARPA money, uh, which was federal. Uh, coronavirus money and it was actually given to the city with specific stipulations. And we created a plan and we worked that plan. Um, and we have modified that plan, uh, three times that I'm aware of. Uh, it goes on to say that we diverted money from the American Rescue Plan, that's the ARPA. We didn't divert any money from that, in fact, public safety was expressly one of the things. Um, that ARPA money could be used for. Uh, it says, uh, the plan was budgeted to you to be spent on homeless initiatives, absolutely a false statement. Uh, in fact, there's nothing in the ARPA plan that specifically said anything about homeless. That was a localized plan that we knew that we were going to have the implementation of House Bills. Thirty-one twenty-three and thirty-one fifteen. Uh, and, uh, we weren't sure what the unfunded mandate was going to be on the city. And so staff actually put together that plan and, and made the recommendation, so there was actually nothing being diverted. It also says that, uh, it was enough money to build housing on one of the city's, uh, surplus lots. Um, that's actually not how much we moved, I think we moved about a hundred and eighty-five thousand. Um, but the salient thing is, is we crossed, um, uh, budget years. And so what's important that the public understands is that, uh, we've come to the council because. When we, uh, received grant money, we, we moved up our community resource officer position through the federal grant. Uh, through the cops grant and needed a vehicle. Alright, so, so we basically moved general fund dollars. And, and because we didn't have the vehicle budgeted and we came to the council, which blessed it. We also did the same thing with the pickup truck for the, uh, community, uh, services officer. And so look at the plan, it actually already had in there that the vehicles for those folks. Working with the homeless was going to be covered. But, um, just to give you an idea of what the city is spending on homeless-related initiatives. Um, we have all the sandy cans, um, at multiple places throughout the city. Um, we have the dumpsters, we have garbage removal, uh, and litter removal. Uh, we have the community resource officer and the community services officer. And if you watch the cameras at the boardwalk, for instance, in the morning, sometimes there's five officers because our command staff's out there. We're actually patrolling and clearing and, and implementing the ordinance. Um, those folks need vehicles and they're specialized vehicles, um, because they're transporting individuals plus their belongings. And in some cases, you have to go out and pick up, you know, uh, push carts and they need to go in the back of a pickup truck. Try to put that in the back of a regular patrol car, it just doesn't work. Um, we were trying, if you remember, we held off because we were hoping to get a grant very much like Coos Bay. Um, uh, and if we went simultaneously, we probably would have got funded, but the state came back and said, mm. Um, not really the used Coos Bay, uh, you've got it, but they turned down North Bend. It's okay, that happens, we get grants sometimes, they do vice versa. We've also had to create all the signage, um, to implement the ordinance. Um, we've also had to do the code development, which is the staff time and the legal costs. All of that combined. Bar exceeds the one eighty-five, one eighty-six, one eighty-three, whatever it was. That we then put back in so that we could purchase the patrol cars. Because we had prioritized those new positions first and so now we're, we're making up the gap, but we couldn't do it. Um, because when you look at the cost of the cars, you can't do it in the budget year that we ran. And so it's unfortunate when someone. Outside the city who's not following but sees one thing or. You know, or hear something and thinks that, you know, we're not doing as a community what we need to do. Regardless of where you are politically or otherwise, we have an unfunded mandate. And so this council, this staff is going to follow the letter of the law and that's what we're doing. The ARPA funds have to be used by a certain date, um, and, um, uh, we're also, it's the staff time. Uh, the mayor and I sit on a, um, on the task force for House Bill forty-one twenty-three. And so it's all the staff time that, that, that I as a city administrator spend lobbying for dollars to come to Coos Bay. Uh, North Bend, Coos County, it's the mayor working and going and lobbying at the state level through the league of cities. And the Or- Oregon Mayor's Association, and so collectively, um, us sitting down with the governor and, and having those talks. And the extensive follow-up ha- has paid off and, and we will be having an announcement tomorrow. But again, I just wanted to address that because it just sounds very negative, like we did something. When in fact. We're doing a whole lot and I would really invite them to come and actually help and get on board. And, and work with us on what we are accomplishing, because it's not been an easy task. Um, but that's from the staff side, thank you.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Um, alright, I'm gonna go ahead and, um, what we'll do next is I'll adjourn the meeting, take a three-minute re- recess. And then we'll move into, um, the Urban Renewal Agency meeting and then we'll have our historically unmarked commission meeting. So, uh, is that three, three minutes enough? Alright, so meeting adjourned. All right, so meeting adjourned. Okay. We'll do urban renewal, okay. Okay, uh, Ms. City Recorder. Okay, um, good evening and welcome to the North Bend Urban Renewal Agency meeting agenda for Tuesday, September twelfth at eight seventeen here in the council chambers. I have a copy in front of me that says revised nine oh nine twenty twenty-three, hopefully that's the right one. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Um, is there any public comment this evening? There is not. Is there, um, number three is approval of the U R A minutes from June thirteenth? And is there a motion from the? Okay, had a first from Counselor Hamilton.
Second.
Second from Counselor, uh, or no, it's not Counselor, Commissioner Hamilton, we commissioners and Commissioner Schultz. For the U R A. So we are acting as U R A agents. And so commissioners, uh, first and a second, is there any discussion about the approval of the U R A minutes from June thirteenth? No discussion, all in favor of the approval of the U R A minutes from June thirteenth, please say aye. And the opposed, motion carries. Number four on the agenda is the U R A Resolution sixty-eight, a um resolution of the North Bend Urban Renewal Agency um authorizing its executive director to sign all documents to purchase a tax lots, is there a motion?
Uh, I move to authorize Executive Director Delanyer to sign all documents and purchase lots two-five S one-three-one-five dash A B dash one-one-six-zero-zero and lot twenty-five S one-three-one-five dash A B dash one-one-seven-zero-zero and engage any necessary professional services.
Okay, I hear first, first from Commissioner Jones. Second from the birthday girl, Commissioner Nornoff. Um, so we have a first and a second, any discussion? Okay, um, all in favor of your A Resolution sixty-eight, a resolution of the North Bend Urban Rural Agency authorizes its executive directors to sign all documents to purchase tax lot number two-five S one-three-one-five A B one-one-six-zero-zero-zero and two-five S one-three-one-five A B one-one-seven-zero-zero and engage any necessary professional services, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, Mr. Um, Executive Director, would you have a report for us this evening?
This is where uh, uh, Steph has uh worked up a micro mural grant program uh in the uh U R A plan, it is uh actually a forge for murals, as you're aware. And so uh we'll be targeting uh micro uh murals, these are generally five thousand dollars or less. As you go downtown, there's areas uh in between lots that have boards uh or they're boarded up, and so our goal is to bring those to life. Um, they would have to maintain them for at least five years. Um, and so it's um a a goal to start beautifying and further beautifying our downtown community. Um, and so uh uh we'll soon be releasing uh those grant applications and soliciting. So uh we've worked the last couple of months to solicit artists to sign up uh for our bid uh system so that when we post it, we can then send out the announcement, and then automatically send an alert then that the uh program is now live. And we'll also be uh issuing a uh press release on that. Um, as far as the Bay Area Cleaners uh building, that's in uh cooperation with uh the Oregon Main Street Program and the U R A. Uh, the interior and exterior cleanup has begun, uh staff is working on uh bid documents. And of course, I've done uh the land surveying of that, uh and we will be uh working out uh some easement agreements that um uh will involve our city attorney uh because uh we have what's called a zero lot line uh with the adjacent building. And so uh if you're going to go into a property, there's no way for them to get behind their building without an easement. And so it's been understood, but there's never been anything in writing, and so we need to work to monument that. Um, so that's all from uh my report.
Okay, all right, thank you. Well, um, after number five, the Executive Director's report, next on the on the agenda is for adjournment, so meeting adjourned. Hey, third meeting, you still there Larry? All right.
I'm here.
Okay. Well, guess what, we're gonna have a riveting meeting next with the Historic Landmark Commission. So, Ms. City Reporter, are we opening a new meeting and new recording? Okay, all right. Good evening and welcome to the City of North Bend Historic Landmark Commission, Tuesday, September twelfth, eight twenty-two here in the council chambers. Uh, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. And uh number two on the agenda would be then public comments, is there any public comment this evening?
There's not.
No public comments. So number three on the agenda is the Historic Preservation in the City of North Bend presentation. And I believe we have our um city planner coming forward to give us a presentation. Welcome.
Thank you.
We do still have our city attorney and Larry's iPad online.
All right, well, thank you for having me this evening. Uh, this presentation's gonna be about historic preservation within the city of North Bend. I'm Derek Payne, your city planner, as you know, and tonight I am the Historic Preservation Officer per our code. I'm going to be running through a little bit of what about what presentate preservation is in the context of our program and a little bit of our code, and then some next steps uh moving forward. This will hopefully prepare you for future preservation actions and prepare you for your role as historic, historic landmarks of the mission. So, what does preservation mean? Preservation is the world protection of historic resources.
Larry, I I texted David, so I think he's working on it.
All right, can you hear me?
I can hear you, yeah, but it, the uh, the audio at the meeting certainly went dead.
Sometimes technology is not your friend.
Yep, you bet.
Mark, you got any work to to keep, to keep you busy?
You know, the work is seems to just keep pouring in.
Yeah, I same thing here, that's why I'm sitting in my office.
I think uh on on our side of the business, there's a lot of city attorneys that are retiring out, and uh there's not a whole lot of younger attorneys, I don't think, that have gotten into the municipal law business, so.
About ready to join all them.
I'm done. All right, good for you. I got another twenty-five probably.
I'll be seven years old by then, that's that's long enough.
And it looks like we're back.
Okay. Well, I'm not back yet, oops, something going.
And we are, we are live and recording, right, Macy?
We are. Recording.
Nice work.
There we go.
Nice work.
All right. Then may I continue?
Go ahead.
Okay, um, I was done with that slide anyway. So, where does our authority come from? Uh, as mentioned, your authority to regulate uh regulate preservation activities comes from chapter fifteen sixteen of the North Bend City Code titled Historic Preservation. The code was last updated in twenty twenty-one as part of the Certified Local Government Program. Um, and as CL, as City Council, you adopted to take on preservation as an important part of the CLG program. So, going back to the category of the preservation, we start with preservation. Uh, preservation is the purest form of protection, it revolves primarily around the maintenance of resources rather than extensive repair or replacement of features. Upgrading plumbing, electrical, or other code-acquired items is an acceptable preservation activity. And preservation also requires retention of the features and uses that make the structure historic. For example, the North Bend Hotel um was a preservation project uh that maintained residential use. In short, preservation is keeping what you've got in good kid, in good condition. The next category is rehabilitation. Rehabilitation is a preservation action that, as it sounds, re- rehabilitates an existing property or resource to preserve the character or fabric of that resource. This could be the architecture, the historic purpose, and/or the cultural significance. Rehabilitation acknowledges the need to adapt historic buildings with new uses while maintaining the historic character that makes these resources valuable. The image here is a former church that was converted into professional offices. This shows that cha- that use can change while still retaining the historical character of a building. The next category is restoration. Restoration is another common treatment when it comes to historic resources. The Liberty Theater is an example of restoration of a historic resource. They're making corrections for pa- for past alterations that removed historic features that made the resource special. There's sensitivity in the code i- in this category for code updates um in an effort made to restore architectural features that were originally present on the structure. This restoration work aims to restore a resource to a particular point in history in which it gained its cultural significance. It's important to note that not all, not all revisions to a historic point are appropriate treatments. We'll discuss that a little bit more moving forward. And then finally, reconstruction. It's exactly what it sounds like, reconstructing a historic building that was either too damaged to rehabilitate or no longer exists. For example, if a historic structure was burned down, the health cu- cultural significance reconstruction would be the only appropriate treatment as the resource no longer exists. This is less common and is never the first option, um, if avoidable. As in more cases than not, it entails demolition of the resource. So, each of the four treatments has its place and criteria for which must be applied prior to deciding on a treatment. The level of significance means how important is the resource. Is it the Liberty Theater, which has a storied history within the community, or is it the Welcome to North Bend sign which greets travelers every day? I'd argue that both of these resources are pretty important to the community and are worth preserve.
All right, talk fast.
Okay.
I'm working on it.
Cal, are we counselors in this meeting? Member? Commissioner, Commissioner Gar Boden, you're still there?
Yes, I am.
Go, quick.
Physical condition is the next criteria, which is fairly self-explanatory. Is the resource in good enough condition to maintain and repair? Or does it need total replacement? What does replacement look like and are the craftsmen that make the distinctive features even around anymore? These are all questions we have to ask when addressing physical condition. Proposed use is the next category. Is proposed use compatible with the historic character of the building? Similar to the church a few slides back, a use can change and is acceptable. The question becomes, does it require changes to, changes significant enough to actually alter the historic character of the building? And then finally, code or regulation updates. This one is also pretty self-apparent. Does the research require code updates in order to comply with fire life safety requirements or habitability requirements? So, that would be things like heaters in your tenant spaces that's required. Or having running water, that's a pretty good one. Which we don't have to worry too much about in the City of North Bend. Next is level, so we go to level of significance. As discussed in the previous slide, level of significance matters. Here is Falling Water, one of the most famous pieces of, of modern architecture by one of the most famous American architects, Frank Lloyd Wright. This building finished construction in nineteen thirty-nine, so it not only qualifies on age, but was also commissioned by Edgar Kaufman, who has commissioned other famous pieces of American modernism in Palm Springs. Falling Water is important due to what it is, who constructed it, and its uni- unique sighting along the banks of a river. And the architectural and engineering feats that are the massive cantilevers. This resource has a high level of significance due to multiple features, but a resource only holding one feature can still be important and worth protecting. Physical condition. If the structure looks to like the structure here, it most likely can't be preserved. It might be able to be rehabilitated or restored, but it would have to be reconstructed as a treatment, most likely. When reviewing historic properties, it's important to note the physical condition and what is within the realm of reality with a particular resource. So, that carries this demolition. Demolition, demolition's an ob- obvious option for the previous house, but it does require some additional steps. Use the commission must make findings that demolition is the most appropriate action based on the criteria shown here. The criteria listed here are the considerations you must make in, in the creation of findings for historic property demolitions. This section also covers proper, or covers historic resource relocations, but is less, that's less common than demolition. So, in five A two, it states that the designated property is deteriorated beyond repair. So, how that is, how that is defined is up to the commission. When demolishing a resource that is listed on the historic, the National Register, the National Register of Historic Places, there are more considerations that come into play like, and some of those like value to the community are intangible, so they have to be defined by your adjudication. Now, we're gonna get into alterations. Alterations are a major consideration that most historic structures will have to comply with over the course of their life. Historic resources will have to comply with the course of their life, either due to change of use or physical alteration to the facade or into your structure, structure, or additions. This category is extensive and what we'll cover in alteration section moving forward is gonna be the basis for most historic preservation actions that will come before you.
Would that be like a Liberty Theater adding a bathroom?
It would, it would cover additions and stuff. And at the end here, I do wanna talk a little bit about locally designated places. Um, so, going into this section, which is MCC fifteen sixteen oh eight oh four A, a property shall be used as it was historically or be given new use that requires minimal changes to its distinctive materials, features, spaces, and spatial relationships. This addresses alterations or use and speaks to the need to maintain the fa, the historic fabric of the space when we're changing uses or rooting back to a use that historically existed. So, if we were to convert that church a few, from a few slides back, back into a church, that would be an alteration, because we're changing the use. So, continuing on alterations, the next section, the historic character of a property shall be retained and preserved. The relocation of distinctive materials or alteration of features, spaces, and spatial relationships that characterize a property shall be avoided. Again, broadly, this is addressing the general historic preservation of a property and how the alterations will interact with the historic nature of the building. This is a fun picture.
Happening here.
That's exactly right. So, this gets into creating a false sense of history. So, property that, a property shall be recognized as a physical record of its time, place, and use. Changes that create a false sense of historical development, such as adding conjectural features or elements from other historic properties shall not be undertaken. This requirement generally applies to historic districts, but is absolutely applicable to individually identified historic resources. It's important that we don't create fake history where none previously existed. ATA here is a perfect example of that. It's not a historic use nor a property, but is given conjectural features to create a false sense of historicism. When reviewing designs of a historic property, it's important that all proposals comply with the period for which the building is significant, not from when it was constructed, from when it was significant. And we'll get into that here. So, changes to a historic property that have acquired historic significance in their own right shall be retained and preserved. So, if a building was originally constructed with bricks, but was later renovated with stucco during, and during this period, it gained its historical significance, it's no longer appropriate to restore the bricks back to its original condition. This goes back to creating a false sense of history. It's important that when reviewing alterations to historic structures, we address the actual period in which the building gained its significance. So, for our architectural historians, this is The Kaufman Desert House by Richard Nutra. It is not a designated register like Falling Water, but it is still beautiful and seen at the beginning of its own right. Um, so, distinctive materials, features, and finishes and construction techniques or examples of, of craftsmanship that characterize a property shall be preserved. This property utilizes unique construction methods and exercises masterful craftsmanship in the execution of this project, which was constructed in nineteen forty-six. So, it is an example of an eligible resource. And it's something that we'd wanna look at a little bit further if it came before the commission as a potential designate. Moving on to the next section here, deteriorated historic features shall be repaired rather than replaced. Where the severity of that deterioration requires replacement of a distinctive feature, the new feature shall match the old in design, color, texture, and where possible, materials. Replacement of a missing features shall be substantiated by documentation and physical evidence. Notice how the code section states where possible materials. This is because a lot of our craftsmen who's, who did specialty stonework, ironwork, or millwork either aren't around anymore or don't make the things that they once did. This is especially prevalent on more ne, ornate neoclassical buildings where the designs and flourishes are difficult to replicate. An example used in the Historic Preservation Course that I attended was that an applicant asked to replace the cap on top of a column with resin cast recreations. This was an acceptable replacement as the height of the column ones itself to alternate materials. This should not work so well with wings coating and eye level. So, when considering replacement of a feature, it's important to consider how the user, the end user will interact with the feature. Chemical and physical treatments, if appropriate, shall be undertaken using the gentlest means possible. Treatments that cause damage to historic materials shall not be used. So, the facade and the top image used chemical treatment and a sandblaster to remove paint from the brick. Hopefully, you can see how pitted and discolored the brick became because of this treatment. In the bottom picture, specialty chemical treatment specifically for historic brick was used, and the results are much better. It is important that when we discuss preservation, we're actually doing things that preserve the underlying materials. When reviewing applications for a restoration project, it would be in the best interest of the resource to ask the applicant how they're planning on restoring the different items. Archaeological resources shall be protected and preserved in place. If resources must be disturbed, mitigation measures shall be undertaken. So, this one's pretty self-explanatory. Protecting archaeological resources are just as, if not more important than protecting resources such as historic structures. Leave it alone unless absolutely necessary to relocate them and work with the appropriate archaeological entities and keep their guidance on historic artifacts. New additions, exterior alterations, or related new constructions shall not destroy historic materials, features, and special relationships that characterize a property. New work shall be differentiated from the old and shall be compatible with his, compatible with historic materials, features, size, and scale, and proportion, and massing to protect the integrity of the property and its environment. So, differentiated but compatible is the key to additions and the.
We're back. Commissioner Gar Boden is still there.
Rachel.
Okay.
So, the differentiated but compatible is the key to additions. In the above image, the main hall in the center is lengthened left and right by additions. They're differentiated by color of brick, which is a little bit hard to tell in this image, and massing, but still compatible with the historic use and sighting. When looking at additions, this is where you become the quasi-Judish or quasi-architectural review board. You're going to evaluate the massing or volumes of a building and ensure that the addition doesn't dwarf the existing resource, but also that it doesn't look tacked on. You're gonna review the, the proportion of everything from the walls to the windows and ensure that the rhythm of the facade matches both the subject and adjacent properties. The review under this subsection can seem pretty intrusive, but it is the meat and potatoes of the alteration section and where your authority and responsibility to preserve is broad and powerful. So, new additions and adjacent or related new construction shall be undertaken in such a manner that if removed in the future, the essential form and integrity of the historic property and its environment would be unimpaired. So, this is another key piece that you have at your disposal. Is the alteration such that if it were removed, nobody would ever know that it existed in the first place? Solar panels are a great, a great example of this as they're an alteration that while, yes, impacts the exterior of a property, they're temporary and that they could be removed and you'd never know they were there. Solar panels do not materially impact the integrity of a historic resource and is, that's what this section is getting at. Any addition that is approved should be reviewed with the preservation treatment in mind so that it must be removable in order to restore the structure to its original con, original condition if so desired. So, some things to keep in mind are that you don't have to like a project in order to approve alterations. It's important to remember that does, that architecture and design is subjective and while our rules aim to be objective. So, it either meets the criteria or it doesn't, which is how decisions in this body, by this body need to be made. Historic resources are called resources because they aren't all buildings. The North Bend sign could be a historic resource. The North Bend Bridge could be a, a resource. An archaeological site could be a resource. They're all equally as important to protect because they make up the fa, the historic fabric of our city. I don't think I need to convince anybody here on the merits of preserving and protecting and acknowledging our history. And one of the things that makes North Bend's unique is our historic downtown and the resources throughout the city. I have a map that I will get to all of you that shows all of the buildings within North Bend that are over fifty years old, which could make them potentially eligible. And it's a majority of the city.
Yeah, wow.
Oh, and they all have sewer lines and roads in front of them that are historic too.
Yes. So, a place has character by knowing what it is and what it has. So, not every older property is historic or even eligible, but they're all contributing factors to the character of the city. So, do you have any questions on everything that I covered in the four classes that we've had?
So, yeah, I was just gonna see if there was anybody online. Commissioner Gar Boden, did you have any questions?
Uh, no.
Okay. Counselors.
So, bringing up the old sewer lines, that's, that was a question immediately about all of this is that. So, we have a historic building that is connected. It has bathrooms and has water. And preserving the old sewer lines would not be what you wanna do.
No.
So, what category does that fall in?
So, that, that would fall under code updates and, and regulation updates. So, we, when we're changing a use or when we're opening up walls or whatever, we have to put back the new code. That's, you know, plain and simple, we have to do that. And that's allowable under, under any of the treatments.
Great.
So, that's something that we, you know, we don't wanna replace, or we don't wanna maintain. Yeah. Clay lines, yeah.
There'd also be a level of significance, I feel like, London.
Yeah, it's not, it's not really, and exactly. Yeah. But yeah, and you, you just mentioned it right there. A lot of these categories, while I presented them separately, there's a lot of overlap in between them. And so, you can have projects that are a preservation project where you're also rehabilitating parts of it. And it's very dynamic, but preservation is the overall goal. All right, so if there's no more questions on that, I have one last slide.
Okay.
All right, so historic preservation moving forward. So, outreach is a vital part of not only the participation but awareness that we both have, that we both have a historic preservation program and that we want people to participate in it. We do need to do outreach as part of the program in order to maintain our CLG status. And here are some examples of things that I discussed with our consultant from Shippo. So, doing a historic preservation scavenger hunt where you as the commission go out into our historic downtown and pick some historic features and take some pictures, put them together on a scavenger hunt and maybe have a prize at the end, or a prize raffle at the end, or recognition by City Council, or, you know, any number of things that you guys can dream up. The other one is historic preservation coloring sheets. So, we go downtown, take some pictures of those historic buildings and, you know, staff can draw up some coloring sheets and we can get those out as a coloring contest for our younger audience. And we can get those out as a coloring contest for our younger audience or more creative audience. And then the third one that we discussed was historic preservation workshops. So the wood window maintenance one is one that she had seen done all over the state where there's a consultant that travels around and puts together wood window maintenance kits. So your wax, your sash cord, your plane, you know, micro planners and stuff like that to maintain your historic wood windows and keep them in good working order. And so I thought that was kind of an interesting thing. Or alternative materials workshop where, you know, if we want to resin cast column caps or if we want to, you know, restore a brick or change roofing materials or what, what have you, a consultant could come talk to the community about that. And those are paid options, so there's a little bit of extra cost that we'd have to factor in and take to city council. But these are just some of the ideas that we've floated. If you have any more ideas, we'd be happy to, I'd be happy to hear them and work with you on making them a reality. But we do need to pick something for community outreach. And I propose that we think about it and come back together at the December meeting and have, have something to move forward with. Historic Preservation Month is May, I believe. And so I think that if we go all out and kind of do something to really make the citizens aware that we have a historic preservation program and that we're taking it seriously, I think that would be a very good thing.
Is this just for downtown, you know, so Main Street is a small square, what is, this is for the whole town?
This is for the whole city.
Give us a map of.
I, I will get you guys a map, yeah, I meant to bring it this evening and I forgot it in my office.
Would we be this commission and then we're gonna bring it to ourselves?
Yes.
All the power. So, so you're, so at this point, no decision needs to be made, but you're saying we should come up with something by December?
I think that, I think that at the December meeting, if we have this conversation again and you guys could come together and decide on some outreach event, whether it be the scavenger hunt or coloring sheets or what, what have you, just some direction to go.
Yeah.
I think that that'd be ideal.
And is it, do we have to be careful about not crossing over, can there be crossover with Main Street? To do some sort of celebration of, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying that they're all over town. Is there some way to tie it into maybe some other event that's happening and things like that? I like the idea of the scavenger hunt.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That could be fun.
So, so. Let's take it out of the box here. Making, hmm, okay, so this, this body refers it to the city council, and the city council can refer it to the events committee. And the events committee can too on it, come back to the city council, which then could make a recommendation back to this committee. To this one. How's that for a? And if you want to stop along the way and check in with the URA and see where they are, not a bad idea.
Somebody might say that's wrong, that's what's wrong with government.
I don't know, I think you have a direct line.
Yeah. Yeah. Are we, so it is, it is, you know, I mean, it's, it's the, towards the end of our next meeting is the twenty eighth, so I just didn't know how quickly you need to.
Because he said like May.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you want an event in May, I guess.
Yeah.
But, yeah, we like photos too, you know that.
Yes.
Yeah, right.
But we could have like, I need to learn how to work on double hung windows with the lead weights and all that kind of thing. So that kind of thing, that kind of thing, like how to practical things could happen in a winter, winter setting.
And you could like take the community club and, not the community club, the community center, the event center, and actually have a historic preservation fair where vendors come in. So, so, so there's lots of things.
Yeah.
Send it to the committee and have them come back. Because there hasn't been folks that wanted to volunteer too much for this committee, but like I said, go out there and recruit.
I tried.
You can recruit your replacements.
A what?
Cannon?
Yeah, a cannon.
Cannon.
Like a boom cannon.
Yeah, but it'd be illegal to shoot it off, I think. Yeah, why do you like cannon?
He's part of the Christian Storni Preservation.
He wants to take pictures, that's his scavenger hunt, he butts.
The statue of L.J. Simpson is my neighbor and gardener, and he has a boundary, and he made a cannon for another gardener fellow.
Okay, anyways, moving on.
That, that is all that I have for you, I just wanted to give you guys a little bit of homework before December.
Okay.
And.
Is it, so is the map something that'll come later in the spring?
I, I can get you guys a map tomorrow morning.
Nobody's gonna be up early tomorrow night.
I will be.
All right. Yeah.
That would be fun to look at, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so that is, that is item three of the historic landmark commission. For the presentation. And we've been having some commission comments, is there any further commission comments? Think he did a great job, this was good, I'm glad that we're doing, we need to have four of these meetings a year.
Yes.
Do we need to ask to put it on city council to talk, to send it to the, we want it before December?
Yeah, if you want to take action and refer it.
Now that we have an event committee.
Well, remember that the events committee has a very specific scope of.
Yes, I think that this is within their scope.
I thought it was.
I think the events committee is to basically come back to the city with recommendations on how to celebrate North Bend and to move it forward, but it also sunsets in a certain amount of time too.
Yeah, but a historical landmark.
What is the verdict on that resolution?
On which one?
I'm, I'm asking.
Yeah.
I know it's city attorneys here, you probably have that memorized.
It's within that.
I would say that does because it's, it's try to help make like an event for a event with, with historical landmarks, so we already have existing in our event that people need to be aware of.
I think it's a little bit more narrow than that. Do you have it handy, are you getting, are we getting into the operational versus, are you, is that what you're thinking of, operational versus strategic?
No.
Strategic.
What I'm hearing, okay.
Okay.
All right, what's it say?
Yeah.
It says, a special events committee's purpose is to provide recommendations to the city council to review and consider options for future celebrations and how to sustain and or improve upon the July Jubilee celebration. As part of his special events committee's review process, the committee should consider North Bend's history, culture, and values resonate with the community.
That's what I thought.
And what is it, and so was there a sunset time on that?
The special events committee shall sunset at the end of its mission and in any event will be reviewed by the city council after a period of six months for consideration of continuing with this committee or resolving it.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought it was written to give latitude, so I, thank you.
All right.
But yeah, it's wide open too. I'll decide if you want to refer.
So tell me, how to be, so we're in commission comments, right, well, before we go to commission.
Oh, that's right, you guys are the committee. See, I wouldn't have you all make the recommendation, someone else want to make a motion.
Okay, so what would you recommend that motion be?
That we added to an agenda item, what do we want to add into the?
Yeah, just refer it, referring to the city council for consideration to assign it to the events committee.
We are outsourcing our homework.
Yeah.
This is what I'm sensing.
Yeah, but you're just saying, yeah, to yourself.
Can I ask?
Well, how about this? If there is a consensus, we'll write it up and, and send it over to the council for its next meeting. How's that from the staff?
All right. Yes, would it be too early to give that events committee's meeting shortly? Could I at least give them a copy of the PowerPoint of, so they can?
You can talk all, all, you just amend your agenda because I know you're wearing multiple hats, but it'd be no different than if a committee member like meeting and said, hey, you know, we should add an agenda item and talk about it. So yes, that committee can talk about it, and it's not that confined. Committees have more latitude.
But the city council has to say what the event committee's gonna look at.
Right, their role is to just bring recommendations.
Okay.
So, okay. All right, we have so many hats.
Does that make sense?
Yes. So, so.
Yes.
I'm not on the events committee, but what if I have an idea?
Well, you're allowed to participate when it comes back to the council, because there can't be more than, so you can send something through the city administrator that can get it to the committee. But yeah, but, but yeah.
Okay. Did we say?
Yeah, yeah, you only have two and you have the two.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, but if, if I could get extra copies of the PowerPoints, they do this, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
Yeah, the folks to the right and left can do everything you can do.
Yeah. Okay, so no further commission comments. Then I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Good night, Larry.
Good night.
You all, yeah, thank you.